I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 24th, 2017, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few personnel items in the table file.
Actually, we had two different pieces in the table file. We had a committee report filed from the C meeting on Friday, and then we also have a number of personnel items as well in the table file.
Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, April 10th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Most moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, April 10th, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
We have one announcement this evening. On Wednesday, March 29th, Sibley Student Council kicked off Simply Sheets fundraiser. The four Ronald McDonald houses in Minneapolis and St. Paul are in desperate need of new white sheets for all their beds. That's a total of 85 twin beds and 74 queen beds. The student council set a lofty goal of raising $3,500 in just two weeks to meet the need. The goal was not only met, but was exceeded. $4,863.38 was raised, and this year, for the first time ever, two families placed a matching challenge offer to Sibley families. If $1,000 was raised, the two families would match the donation. And so, we want to thank all the folks who gave, and the sheets will be purchased and brought to the Ronald McDonald house later this month. So, I know Becky Har was one of the people involved, and that's why we thank Becky and the rest of the folks at Sibley, who really did this awesome fundraiser for the Ronald McDonald houses of the Twin Cities.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there -- are there any other announcements? Board members have -- Rob?
I just wanted to say that I had the honor of being a judge for the high school poetry slam on 14th of April, I think, and 20 students performed, and it was really inspiring and really exciting, and it was a great experience, and I'm glad that this is happening. And I'm really thankful that we have Jennifer Lombard to organize these things.
Excellent. Thank you. That was an amazing event. Any other -- anything else anyone would like to add? Okay. So, this is the second meeting of the month, so we will review committee reports. This is an opportunity for board members to report on committees in which they serve as school board liaison. We have two reports tonight. We'll start first with Ellen Iverson.
Sure. So, in your board packet, I have a report from the D-PAC, District Education Program Advisory Council. And what I thought would be noteworthy is that this year, we've been really reevaluating how D-PAC is going to operate in the future. And Dr. Hillman presented proposals with D-PAC that we had an opportunity to discuss in small groups and then come back to a larger discussion where we shared what we appreciated about it, what our concerns were, and questions and suggestions. And so, to give you a sense of what that proposal looked like, it's repositioning D-PAC to be in sort of a valuation role, like as a critical friend to the district. And Dr. Hillman had sort of a framework for thinking about the meetings. There would be fewer meetings, but they would be really focused on an agenda that aligned with sort of a continuous improvement process. So, looking at early on, early meetings in the fall would look at sort of our progress on the strategic plan. D-PAC would get sort of the first viewing of the world's best workforce results and be able to comment on those. And another piece would be to actually look at the evidence of practice that the PLCs develop and provide a small group activity where that would be examined. There would be opportunities that were called signature results presentations, which would feature PLCs that have learned something in particular or succeeded in a specific way. And this would all end up coming to the spring and where D-PAC would be providing recommendations for the site improvement plans. So, we discussed this as a proposal, and the next steps were that Dr. Hillman and Mayor Gray were synthesizing all the group's comments and coming back, as well as a follow-on survey, coming back to the group in May with sort of a more finalized model for thinking about D-PAC going forward.
Excellent report. Comments board members would like to share about the proposed new D-PAC structure?
I think the proposals of the changes are really good. We know that D-PAC has been such an effective committee for the board in terms of direction and being able to sort of reshape a little bit how they do their work, I think will be really effective.
Dr. Hillman, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think just the key thing is making sure that we remove any of the middle -- if you think about how D-PAC interfaces with the new strategic plan, it just -- it added another layer, you know, between the unit of change, which is the PLC, and the district level strategic plan goals. And so, the more straight line that we can make between the PLC goals and the strategic plan is the most important thing. And so, rather than having D-PAC recreate goals that would kind of live somewhere between the strategic plan and the school improvement plan and the PLC goals, trying to just remove that one layer to have a more direct alignment of all those groups. And I think it's going to simplify the structure for PLCs and for building-level school improvement plans because they won't have this litany of additional goals that D-PAC had to align to. They're aligned to the goals that you have set in the ongoing priorities as the board, based on the 188 people plus all the people in Thought Exchange who had given us feedback through the strategic planning process. We want -- we've said from the beginning, this strategic plan was going to be alive, and it was going to be the guide that we used for making our decisions. And I think everything that you've seen us do this year does that, and this, what I call it, is D-PAC evolving, because that's what it really is. And so, again, getting some more feedback, getting some more stakeholder participation. I think it has a chance to really make D-PAC even more effective moving forward and having more relevance in the overall school improvement process.
Excellent. Thank you. No, we have a --
I didn't give you a heads up on this, but can you tell me who are the members of D-PAC?
From the board?
From the board or everybody? So, from the board, it's Julie, Margaret, and I are the three. And then, the D-PAC itself includes administrators. So, for example, Marnie and Cheryl are on there, Greg Joe and O., and then teachers, I know Ellen Muha, there's a couple Ellens. So, the -- and then we have --
Ellen Trotman.
Yeah, Ellen Trotman. The District Youth Council, we have had. So, it's -- and then, community members. We've had some community members that had sat on D-PAC for many years. What's going to be different about this will be it'll include more teachers and more community members than it has in the past.
Sounds like a good cross-section of the community.
It really has been.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. So, thanks for the report, Ellen. So, I submitted the next report, which actually came in the table file because this meeting took place on Friday. And it was a general membership meeting for C, Schools for Equity and Education, of which we're a part of. And the meeting included a couple aspects. The first one, of course, at this time of year, the legislative update, which was provided by Brad Ledell, who's the executive director of C. So, a couple things happening right now. Getting obviously very action-packed at the Capitol with their target to end session by May 22nd. There are conference committees have been established within the education framework. There's two conference committees. There's teacher licensure, and then education funding and policy are together. So, what will happen now is the CAGFREES, those from the parties that have been chosen to be a part of the conference committees, have been chosen. This week, they will come up with their targets, which will be a significant development because that will indicate how much money they actually have to spend. So, right now, the -- it is hopeful that the education spending targets will be roughly between $500 and $550 million. Last year, education spending was about $500 million, so roughly about flat to where it was last year. We hold great optimism that as part of that $500 million, there will be a 2% increase each year on the basic funding formula, which just that increase of 2% in the biennium is $371 million. So, obviously, with a target of five or $550 million, there's not a lot left over. So, we will see how that comes through. We'll see that come through the media, et cetera. So, watch for those target numbers, which is -- really dictates the work that they can do. Also, on the tax committee side, which we're fortunate these two particular pieces are in the tax committee, the equalization bill and the ag to school bond tax credit. So, those two pieces were -- there was a hard push to get those moved off into taxes versus keeping it in education funding, because clearly, it's a tax credit. It belongs in taxes. I think it's interesting tonight that we're talking about debt service because we are directly impacted -- our taxpayers are directly impacted positively as a result of equalization. So, we hope that that comes through. There is some optimism because some of the cosponsors on the equalization bill are also CAGFREES. So, they have some stake in the game with the bill that they carried, so hopefully, that equalization will come through. And again, the ag to school bond tax credit will come through. Unfortunately, both of those will come through in the tax omnibus bill, and so, we hope that they are -- they'll come through with no vetoes, as was happened last session. So, the second part of the meeting was an ESSA update. You know, that's the re -- the new bill that replaces No Child Left Behind. ESSA is on track for going into effect for the 18, 19 school year. Minnesota is on track for submitting our state's plan by September of 17. We had two guest speakers there, representatives from Senator Franken's office and Representative Carr's office. They spoke in a very positive way about ESSA and sort of in the way that districts view it as well. They felt the positive aspects of ESSA are really around the increased local control that it provides districts. So, they were supportive of that legislation. In addition, Senator Franken has introduced legislation to address teacher shortage in rural America, and he also has been extremely active and very involved in looking and researching businesses that have developed good partnerships with their education community. So, he is sponsoring some legislation actually to try to increase -- to provide some resources to increase the amount of K-12 education partnerships with businesses. I mean, he obviously sees that as a really excellent way to address, you know, the skills gap, which is really, you know, in many ways, obviously, key to the economic growth of our state is to have those skilled workers. So, he's been very involved with that and actually had just visited Marshall, Minnesota over the spring break, the Congress's spring break, and was able to see firsthand the work they're doing. So, he's been really out and about looking for those opportunities to see what's happening. We also talked -- they also talked about the president's current proposed education budget at the federal level, which actually, for both of those legislatures, legislators has caused a bit of concern. Again, it's just the president's proposed budget, so there will be a lot of work that will have to happen before Congress and the president come together on a budget. But, the president's initial proposal is concerning in that it represents a $9 billion cut to federal dollars or 13 and 1/2 percent reduction. So, that's a lot of money taken out of the federal education budget. Things like AmeriCorps, 21st Century Learning Grant are go-away. It provides only flat funding for special education, and we know that that, you know, that continues to grow, so that's concerning. In addition, the president's budget does include $1.4 billion for school choice, including charter and private school vouchers. So, we'll continue to watch as the federal legislators and our president deal with the federal budget. So, I guess, back to where what probably impacts this most directly is our own legislators, and they seem to be in a position where they can make some very solid decisions about how they spend the surplus, and we hope that those decisions include some increases for us and particularly the 2 and 2% on the formula. So, what I see happening, as it does all legislative sessions, is that Deb Griffiths from C will be sending action alerts to board members and others signed on the email list. So, we'll watch for those as they start to see where there's some potential areas of concern where we can wait and see whether that's a significant thing that we can do as board members and community members is to wait with our legislators as they grapple with some pretty difficult issues and there's a lot of competing priorities for legislators, and we just have to be there reminding them how important education is. That was the C meeting. Always very interesting this time of year. So, any questions? Anyone have? Okay. Great. Oh, I'm sorry, Rob. I just -- your hand.
I'm just curious about the teacher --
Yes.
What we said about that and what's going on. I haven't followed that.
I have not followed that one closely. I know on that, do you know specifically?
So, they are looking at a number of different pieces that will streamline the process, especially for people coming from out of state, and there's a number of tiers that they're looking at upon what circumstances you're in, which tier you fall within. It should streamline. One of the major concerns is people coming in from out of state who have been very successful teaching in other states but don't have the exact criteria to get Minnesota licensure. There's a number of pieces within that process that's going to simplify that that is good. Probably the biggest thing that we're looking at in terms of teacher licensure is it appears that there's momentum to extend what's called the ABS license. It's an academic behavioral specialist. It's now the gateway license for special education. The problem with the current legislation is it put a time limit on how long a special education teacher could teach in special ed with that ABS licensure before they were required to get something called an anchor license. This is where we have a number of different issues, and through our work with MACE, the Minnesota Association of Special Education Administrators, MASA, and some others, I think we believe that there's some momentum to extend that ABS beyond the five-year piece. We've got a situation in some special education licensure areas where the state has a licensure requirement that no Minnesota school currently offers a program in which you could get licensed for that disability area. And it's because the cohorts of students have become so small that some of the state colleges and universities are saying, "We can no longer afford to offer this program." So, you have a licensure that's required by the state, and of course, they are the low incidence -- some of them are the low incidence licensureers, but you would actually have to go out of state to get the courses that you need for the licensure, and the ABS has been the gateway piece. It was really a really good piece to help us with the teacher shortage, especially in special education, but we need to get rid of that five-year limit, and it looks like there's a pathway to do that.
Excellent. Thanks, Matt. Okay. Good. So, we will move on to our first item for discussion and report, and tonight, we are pleased and very excited to welcome the District Youth Council. I will -- I'm not sure what order you plan to come up and present, but I do want to introduce all of you. Our two seniors, Abby Andrade Flores and Linda Rosas Belvin are our two seniors. Juniors, Barrett Hendel and Lexi Doherty, and our lone sophomore, Ethan Schaefer. So, we welcome you and look forward to your presentation.
So, we have the District Youth Council, or five representatives.
So, Barrett, I'm sorry. As you come to the mic, maybe introduce who you are. I think a lot of us know you, but those -- I just said your name, so maybe they can -- we can put a --
I'm Barrett Hendel. I'm a junior at the high school. I'm a member of District Youth Council, and I am honored to be here. So, District Youth Council is a student-run organization with the help of the fabulous Malia. And our goal is to be a voice for the youth at the high school and also within the district, although right now, we're, I think, more focused on the high schools. We're expanding DYC as a whole. It's a relatively new organization. Our goal is to interact with the district, which includes the school board, administration, kind of all sides, and provide an input from the student perspective, which, from what we've seen, there isn't a whole lot of student input throughout much of the district in terms of decisions that affect students, which is a critical piece that we believe is missing. Our goal is also to inform youth about issues that affect them coming from administration, whether that be the school board or school policy. The Student Rights Commission will talk more about that. And as of right now, we have subcommittees we've divided up into, although we are looking at moving some of those around, much like D-PAC is right now, kind of tailoring things to fit the needs that we see and not just things that we think we might need. So, that's that.
Lexi, use the keyboard right to the --
Hello. I am Lexi Doherty. I'm a junior at Northfield High School, and this is my second year serving on District Youth Council. I'm a part of the subcommittee Diversity and Representation. This year, it's a subcommittee which also includes Eileen Baker, Alida Dice, our DYC co-chair, Gabby Estrada, and myself. We came to realize that our peers struggle with mental health issues. We therefore are focusing our work on publicizing Northfield High School's mental health resources. As of now, we have put up posters around the halls about the mental health services that Northfield High School provides. We also tabled at all three lunches and asked for student input on how effective they thought the current mental health resources are, as well as suggestions on how -- on what the school can do to improve our resources. We found that many students were not aware of our mental health resources, and were also uneasy coming in to get help because of Northfield High School being such a small high school and such a closed community. We are currently working on creating short videos to showcase our counselors, psychologists, and other mental health helpers to make students aware of our resources. We talked to Mr. Lear, and the videos will be weekly posted on Schoology, and students can watch them at their own free will instead of being pressured to watch them during class. We are also trying to find out what mental health resources the students can get over the summer in case they need it. Once we figure out what those resources are, we will work on publicizing them for the students so they can access them. We are working with James Coulter, who is the coordinator of the Rice County Mental Health Collective, to access these mental health resources. We are also working primarily with Ms. Duba at the high school and Greg Gianopolis on this project.
So, I am part of the school board subcommittee, and this year, we have been able to attend the D-PAC meetings, which we are -- we've enjoyed very much, and we look forward to continuing to work with D-PAC and the school board as our role evolves and as both of those groups evolve to better suit the needs of the district. We also encourage members of the DYC to attend school board meetings and report back what they've found at our monthly meetings. And one reason that we do that is that we like to -- we like to try and inform the student body about what the school board's talking about, what are those decisions being discussed that affect them ultimately. And a lot of students, the vast majority, are unaware and/or do not care about what the school board is doing. But, it's -- when you get talking to people, it really does kind of spark their interest, you know? What are they doing? How does that affect me? So, it's been really cool to see how kids are interested in this once we kind of open up to them.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Linda Rosas, and I'm a member of the publicity committee. So, as it was mentioned before by Barrett, we're a fairly new council, and so, students still don't really know who we are or kind of what our purpose is. And so, that's why we created the publicity committee. And so, it was to ensure that students are aware of DYC and how they -- what it is that we can do for them. Something -- one of the first things that we did this year was create a display board by the main office so that students can see it right when they're walking and know a little bit more about it and who's on it, who are the members, and who they can reach if they have any concerns. One of the event -- well, an event that we have done is it was a game show night, and it had various questions. Some were about DYC, and so, trying to get more students to know about it and be kind of enthusiastic and trying to be involved in publicity. We were still trying to figure out what are some good ways to publicize DYC. So, yeah, thank you.
Hi. My name's Ethan Schaefer, and I'm part of the Student Rights and Handbook Subcommittee of DYC. So, this year, our committee has been working on a couple of main points. First of all, as we are in the student body and we have many connections within the student body, we realized that not many people understood the full extent of the student handbook, as it was only addressed at one point during the beginning of the school year. So, due to this, we took on the role of informing the student body of common unknown guidelines in the handbook and felt that we could best do this by issuing a survey on Schoology approximately every other week. After the survey, the data was noted, and in the next survey, the correct answer was provided to the previous one to correct the people that were incorrect or wrong. So, here is the data that we have collected. We began January 17th, and we had approximately 250 survey responses in each survey. So, the survey was issued on January 17th, and the question was asking if it was acceptable to have a knife in your car on school grounds at a basketball game. As you can see, only 74% of the students believe that it is unacceptable to have a pocket knife on school grounds, leaving 26% of the students feeling that they are entitled to having a pocket knife on school grounds since it is outside of the school hours. So, in this survey, which was issued February 8th, the question was asked that if you were to forget your pocket knife in your pocket, what should you do? In response to this, about 73% of students chose that they would go to the office, explain what happened, and hand it over for the rest of the day, while 27% of those surveyed chose other options, such as nothing, if nobody knows, then it's not a big deal, or give it to the teacher or other. So, in this survey, which was on February 22nd, we had the best results of any of the surveys taken so far, and yet, we found that 92% of the people acknowledged that bringing tobacco onto school property was unacceptable, while the other 8% believed that it was okay as it is a legal drug, or they are 18. In this survey, which was issued on the 8th of March, our data said that 76% of the people believed that it was okay for the school to search the backpack if they had probable cause, while the other 24% said that this was unacceptable without the permission of their parents or themselves. And in the last survey that we did on April 17th, which I couldn't get on to the presentation because it was issued recently, we actually had the worst results so far. In the survey, we found that only 55% of the students knew that only seniors could leave the building during the lunch hour, while 45% of the students are believed that they could leave if they had a car, were an upperclassman, had the permission of Mr. Lear, or their parents said that it was okay.
Hi, y'all. So, I'm Abby Andrade. I was a senior, and I was also in the committee with like the student reach-out. And I also focused a lot on the cabinet forum. And so, what I'm presenting are all the comments that we received. So, when we posted bi-weekly the question about, like something about the rights, we also added a link where you could put a comment about anything that concerned you as a student, and we received, I think, around 50 comments, but we chose the top four that we thought were best focused on what the school board might be interested in. And so, the first question or the first comment that we chose was about how we can better focus on those who are rural -- who live in the rural, so like how they can like have their voice and their input on like how tough it can be for them during like -- the weather is really bad for them. Like they -- like a student spoke about how it took them more than an hour to drive to school, and they felt it was inconsiderate that like not canceling school. That was a great, like well-written response. And then, the second one was regarding STEAM opportunities after school and just for students overall. Yeah. And then, another comment was about focus on teachers and how students can provide their input on specific teachers because -- input on specific teachers because on average, we're giving some surveys at the very end of a course or a semester on rating the teacher and a lot of comments that we received felt like we weren't given enough time or enough opportunities to give input on like the teaching skills or the specific teacher and like they felt, or like this comment stated, they felt that teachers changed their behavior when the principal was there. And so that was really interesting. We got a good amount of those that they just wanted to find more ways on how they can provide their input. And then the third one or the second one was about later times again and how they felt that there is like enough evidence showing that, you know, we should have late starts and we know that's been in the discussion for many years but as we can tell from these surveys, it's still students concerned and they're still really passionate about finding some balance for that in the future. And then the final comment we got was about the pocket knife. We got multiple responses about that, how it's not a big deal if you're able to have a pocket knife because perhaps some student feels like, feel, they feel like they need it for self-defense so they felt like they should have the right to have that security in case out of school. And I believe that were the main comments that we chose. And this is just an overview on our plans for next year. So we're hoping to formalize our structure. So as Barrett mentioned, we're rearranging our subcommittees to best represent what our students really care about and what they want, what they really want to be changed. And we're hoping to continue serving on DEPAC and just being connected with the community and that's a great way to do that. And then we want to obviously further our relationship with the School Board because we feel like it makes sense to be connected. We're both dealing with issues about the district and students. And then finally, we just want to continue to explore ways for youth to have their input on the school and I guess basically we're just focusing specifically on what students are concerned about the upcoming year. We really want to pinpoint it so students don't feel that we're just like in the clouds and saying, oh, we're going to help you all. We really want them to understand that we're here for their issues today and yeah, now we're open for questions and thank you.
Excellent presentation, thank you. Board members, questions, comments? Rob?
Okay, so I was recently at a school that has, a school district that has two student members of the School Board so they sit on the School Board, which is a different model than we have and I'm just wondering if you think, what do you think is the advantage of doing it as a youth council with 16 members or whatever as opposed to two people who sit up here every meeting and are sort of member, non-voting members of the School Board?
Input, I think personally, I just think that having a larger committee, we're able to really represent the school because we're fairly diverse with academics and sports and all ages and I feel like two students, that's a really great idea. Maybe we could focus on that maybe upcoming year or just try to adjust that but I think we like to incorporate the connection between the School Board and DYC and that's why we really advise students to come to the School Board meetings but yeah, I think we just like being big so we can have a well-representation of the school.
Other questions?
Yes, no.
How do you currently get the information of the School Board meeting?
Well, we have a sign-up sheet of every School Board meeting and we have had, I believe, at least one student around every School Board meeting and the committee, the committee has worked on a, I think there's like a Google Sheet, a Google Docs that they fill out. We have like 10 questions on there, like what did, what were the main points of the School Board meeting? What can you relate to the actual high school students that, that was talked about at the School Board meeting? And yeah, oh, and we have Ellen Iverson who is our representative, is the representative of the School Board who attends the DYC and she provides a lot of great insight about, you know, the school district and yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Jeff?
I went to school here a long time ago and I probably didn't even have a clue who was on the School Board yet. So I think that it's, it's a good idea for your organization to be kind of a, a little bit of a promoter to ask and see what the, the School Board does and also make that connection. So if they have anything to talk about to somebody else or even, you know, your liaison, Ellen or anybody else that they can bring those issues up. And yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think maybe in the course of the time you go to school here, maybe you go visit, you know, one meeting just to get an idea of what it's, what it's like. Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, thank you. Ellen?
So first, this excellent report. I think it's really important for the Board to hear about the different subcommittees and how the District Youth Council has evolved. As you've mentioned, it's only been three years in the making so I think it's really exciting, all of the different things that you took on this year. I actually had a question for Lexi. I was really interested in the, the mental health work that you guys have done this year and what you're doing with the videos and I'm just curious as to sort of what the student response has been is. One of our near-term priorities has really been to look at social emotional learning so it's been great to see how you guys have dug into this but do you have a sense of how people have responded to things?
I, so I was one of the people that sat at the table. It was me and Gabby Estrada mainly and we sat there and I had a lot of people come up to me personally and say, what resources? What resources, what resources do we have? Because they're not aware that, because I think some people think that just the counselors are just for college help or class help because that's all they really have to go to them for and they don't realize that they can actually help them with their mental health resources. And a lot of people don't know about Carrie Duba or Kari Presteman. I myself, if I ever need something, I go to Renee Marlini because she's a good, big support system. So she's, she's going to be one of the people we showcase as well. And we got some responses like, we should have a mental break room in the school. That's what we're also, something that we're trying to maybe open up as possible idea for the next year or so, so.
Great.
Yeah, it was a lot of, we had a lot of responses, so.
Other questions or comments? Rob?
Okay, just general. So first, what's the thing that you're most proud of that you've done this year? And then the second thing would be, what is something that you wished you did that you didn't do or something that you wish you'd done differently?
As a person myself or through our?
Through the, just.
DYC, okay. Something I'm really proud of is that we're, we're being able to make us, make more awareness of DYC and through diversity and representation, we've been able to get our posters around the school and as I would see, I think there are more people going to their counselors and they're not as scared to get help. What I wish we would have done more, I don't know yet. I think we're at a pretty good mindset right now, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Would anyone else like to respond to Rob's question if you thought of something? Not to put you on the spot, only if there's something you'd like to add.
Only Lexi got put on the spot.
Yes. So, oh, Abby, please come up.
Sorry.
No, we really, we have as much time as you need and we're enjoying speaking with you, so.
Yeah, thank you. So I've been in DYC since the guinea pig year, the very first year and I think that I'm just really proud that we got like some structure and something going on because this was the first year we divided into subcommittees and it really felt more real and more like, okay, we're starting to actually do something for the School Board and that was just exciting for me to be, you know, being able to leave and be like, okay, I think I'm leaving at a good spot. They're going to do some more good for the school. And I just feel like I wish I helped out with the publicity more. I feel like it's hard as a high school student, for a high school student to care about all these committees since there are so many boards now and I feel like I just wish, you know, DYC really focused on like getting our name out because I think it could become something really important and vital in the school. We just really want the students to know and care about us and yeah.
Anyone else? Well, I, I had just a couple of questions. So I was really excited to see the work that you did on the mental health piece. I know when you're, some of your members were here in December and they had highlighted that as something you were working on, so that was just really, really great to see. I was just, maybe this Ethan might be a question directly for you since you kind of reviewed. Were, overall, what were your expectations for number of students that would maybe respond and, and the kinds of responses when you initially went into that and then how you saw it come through, maybe some of the, the challenges you had with it or did it exceed your expectations or going forward, are you going to continue to use this approach or maybe modify it for the next school year?
Well, initially I didn't really know what to expect. I didn't know how many people would honestly take the surveys as there are quite a few surveys going out through all of the organizations on Schoology. So I was really happy with the results we got of 250 students about with every survey, which works as about 25% of our student body at the high school. So I thought that was a very good representation. Going forward, I think I'd like to use the same method to survey the student body. I do think it worked quite well. Our expectations or my expectations personally for the results that we got, I thought that people would, I thought that the percentages would be higher in what people were aware of. I knew that not everyone was 100% sure of what the student handbook was addressing but I didn't know how many people exactly didn't know and I think seeing that around a quarter of the student body every time didn't know something in the handbook was a little surprising for me.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I would, I think, does Board members, has anyone else thought of any?
Yeah, I just want to thank the DYC for coming to the meeting tonight and for all your work. As you said, this is a committee that's only been in effect for three years and it, it came out of the very successful Mayor's Youth Council which has had a longer history. So I'm personally very proud of your work. Student voice is something that's really important to me moving forward and you're starting down that path and you're learning. I think what I'm hearing from your presentation tonight is that you're learning that leadership is tough and it's work and it's attending committees, it's motivating other people, it's making sure that we're rallying people around a single cause, making sure that they understand, you know, what they need to do to be part. And I also hear some of your frustration about maybe not everyone giving the feedback that you're looking for, becoming as involved as you would like them to be. So I really think that this is a great experience for our students to have an opportunity to experience what it's like for many of you on the School Board because I hear that same kind of thing from you from time to time and we hear that from all folks on many elected boards or on other boards that people serve. So anytime that we can give you an authentic learning experience, which means you get to feel just like the adults do on most days, I think you're getting that and you have a great start. These things take time and they take, having some consistency. So I appreciate the folks who have served on the committee for a couple of years. I remember one of the first tasks we did, if you remember a few years ago, was you guys actually went over to the middle school and you did some things at the high school about our master facilities plan that the School Board adopted this past November. There's a direct example of something that you folks did that has had a direct impact on something that the Board did adopt and your feedback was instrumental in that plan. So keep plugging away, you're doing exactly what the rest of us do and you're having a great learning experience doing it. So I am so proud of the work that you're doing and just keep it going and keep leaving, I appreciate, you're leaving a legacy for the next group of people to come and that's so important. Sometimes the trailblazers don't get to see everything get finished but hopefully Ethan as a sophomore will, right? So thanks so much for being here and we really appreciate. And Malia, again, thank you for your work and for organizing people and getting them to be here tonight. We're really proud of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just close by editing when Abby said she hopes that the DYC becomes really important and vital and you are already there. We're just going to continue to watch you grow. So thanks for taking your time with us this evening and we really appreciated the presentation. Thank you. Yes, a good applause. Okay, so we will move on to our next item for discussion, which is the proposed 2017-18 non-operating fund budgets. Here to present though, Val Mertsdorf, Director of Finance.
Equally as important but not nearly as exciting.
That's exactly how I was going to start, so thank you.
You stole her line.
Could escape Val.
All right. Thank you to Bruce for letting me practice that beforehand. So I'm going to present our non-operating funds, which includes the debt service and our scholarship fund. And I will start with the debt service. So just as a reminder, our debt service is basically our bond payments and the levy revenue that comes in. We are required by state statute to levy 105% of our debt payments, principal and interest. The revenue this year includes a new portion for the long-term facility maintenance aid and some state credits and we do have one operating capital bond that has a revenue offset in the general fund, so that's revenue neutral to the taxpayers. And then the expenditures are just our bond and interest, our principal and interest and any other service fees we might incur for processing those payments. This is probably one of my favorite budgets to do because it's incredibly straightforward. Our bond payments are scheduled out and I know for the next 10 years exactly what we're paying. There's no guesswork and our levy is done the fall before, so it makes it pretty easy and not very many assumptions that I have to put into play. So the revenue, as you can see, is relatively consistent and it is going up slightly from our 1617-18 proposed that is primarily due to the principal and interest payments going up about $400,000. We have structured our debt so that it's relatively consistent from year to year for the taxpayers, so they know what to expect. One thing that I will point out is the significant increase in our interest revenue and that is a product, I won't take full credit for it because I'm certainly not in charge of setting in those rates, but we have made a really intentional effort to invest the cash that we have available and we have increased our interest revenue over $100,000 in the last two years. So that's been a really significant increase for all of the funds across the district. And then the state of Minnesota, that large increase is directly related to the aid that we're receiving from the long-term facility maintenance fund or aid, I should say. The expenditures, principal and interest, again, those are structured out so we know exactly what we're going to be paying. Because we just, this past March, did the long-term facility maintenance bond, our first one using that revenue stream, it was not included in our levy last fall, so that will be picked up this August when I go through that process again. So the revenue and expenditures don't quite line up like they do in other years but it'll be an adjustment on a future levy. So our total expenditures is about five, just shy of 5.7 million. And altogether, the fund balance is going down slightly to just under a million and that is primarily because of the long-term facility maintenance fund that did not get included in the levy. Again, on average, I think I would expect our fund balance to range anywhere between 800,000 and 1.2 million depending on, on the year. I would anticipate it would probably go back up because we're levying 105% each year, so it typically goes up a little bit but we do have a debt service excess adjustment that does bring it down to help balance what the taxpayers have to pay, so. This is our actual principal and interest schedule that ties to the total expenditures. We have five outstanding, including our newest for the Bridgewater roof, which you've seen them over there working on that, so that'll be exciting. I'm sure Nancy is ready for it to be done already. So yeah, $4.7 million of principal, just shy of a million for interest for a total of 5.682. And then this is the maturity schedule of all of the five outstanding. And then this is the maturity schedule of all of the five outstanding. If we changed nothing, we would have everything paid off by 2027 for a total of 36.6 million in debt. Any questions?
Board members, questions, comments? Rob?
I'm interested in the investment. I mean, like where, what money is being invested and where is it being invested? I mean...
Sure. So just the cash that we have on hand. We've, the state has paid back the shift. So that was 4.7 million that we got paid back probably two years ago. But on average, the district has $25 million roughly in various accounts. I have tried to invest at least 15 to 18 million of that and leaving the rest for our ongoing monthly expenditures. And school districts are, we have basically a specific list of what we are allowed to invest in. It has to be secure and all those things. I can't go crazy in the stock market with our money. But there's a list of things that we are allowed to. And I typically do all of our investing through PMA. And they have a copy of our investment policy and they typically will, she'll email me and say, hey, I have this or this or this. Here's, here's how much I think we can probably invest. I've done, I've done 24-hour investments, one-month investments, year-long investments. Just kind of depends on what they have available and what looks like it'll work for our cash flow. But just being really intentional. It wasn't something that was necessarily always closely watched before. You know, when I first started in this role, as I kind of, I thought, well, this is a lot of cash. We could be doing something with that. And the interest rates have come a long way. They were very, very low before. And so it didn't really make a huge difference, but it is making a difference now, so.
Great question. I'm sorry, Amy.
Yeah. I'm curious about the 105% levy rate.
Yeah.
So how does that eventually balance out? Or do you just end up with 500% growing forever?
No, it does build, but then the, part of the levy calculation is a debt service excess fund balance adjustment. So when your fund balance gets to a certain point, they basically, you know, here's 105%. This is what you should levy, but we're going to take 500,000 off of that because you have too much fund balance. So it's basically a pre-programmed calculation that happens at the state level when we put in all of our information and they pull our debt service fund balance to see where we're at, so.
And if you levy for 105%, do you actually end up with 105% cash? Or are there certain people who aren't paying their taxes or something like that? So you're not getting your full...
We end up with close to that if we didn't have the debt service excess. We've had a pretty significant fund balance. So we've seen an excess adjustment probably every year for the last three years for sure. This current year, I think it was almost 600,000 that was included in that. So it, in theory, yes, we would actually get very close to 105%. I think the ratio of what we actually get for our certified levy is 98 or 99% of that typically, so.
Okay.
Julie, can I ask one clarification? Val mentioned that the state paid back the infamous shift a couple of years ago and that it was a 4.7 million payback. And I just think it's important for folks watching at home that they understand that that was not new money. That was money that the legislature used to meet the requirement of a balanced budget. And what it did is it withheld our payments for a certain period of time. We still had the paper authority to spend that money. And in Northfield, having a reasonable general fund balance allowed us not to have to borrow money to be able to use that spending authority. Many districts in Minnesota, when they were short that cash, but still had the spending authority, had to do a lot of short-term borrowing in which they were paying, albeit a small amount of interest. So because of our good financial stewardship, we were able to weather that storm without necessarily having to borrow money where many other districts had to do that. But one of the things that people get confused about with the shift is that they think when the state paid it back that that was new money. And it was not new money. It was money that we already had on the books. And once in a while, I know this is going to be shocking to you, but you might hear a legislature who might characterize it in the way that they paid us the money, which they had already given us, but had taken it back. And only the legislature can do that. So I just think it's really important we clarify what that shift was. Because anytime we hear that word and then people talk about the 4.7 million that came back to the district, sometimes people think that that was new money. It was not new money. It was money that they had taken from us that had been promised in a delayed payment. So I think it's important that we point that out.
Excellent. Thanks, Tim. Other, oh, no.
The legislature speaks of a shift.
Can you turn your microphone on? No, thanks.
Legislature speaks of a shift, I think it's a shaft. I didn't need a mic.
No.
So other questions or comments for Val? Thank you again for a detailed report. And I, again, we always like the narrative that you provide and great work on the interests. That's excellent. Thank you for doing that.
She's got one more for us tonight, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. That's right. We have the scholarship fund. I'm sorry.
I know you're ready for me to be done, but...
No, no, no. I just, I forgot that this was also a part of the presentation, so I apologize.
Not a problem. So the scholarship fund is, again, a really straightforward fund. This is, we're the fiduciary for donations that organizations and community members give us to provide over 80 scholarships from 50 different donors, 50-plus different donors annually. We are the fiscal host for about 50% of them. So what you see in my presentation is not all of it in its entirety. It's only what we are financially responsible for. So as you can see, each year, it's been pretty consistent. We are projecting about 72,000 donations for next year. Again, I probably should have increased that, that earnings on investment, that will probably come in slightly higher. And then the expenditure is about 76,800. And as a reminder, the expenditures are slightly higher because we do have just a handful of basically endowments where they gave us a lump sum and we are spending it down incrementally per the agreement or the, whatever the endowment had specified we could spend it on. So my expectation would be a similar slow spend down of the fund balance as we go through those. So we are looking to, are projecting to end with about 125,000. We have probably accounts for almost 75 different scholarships. Some are that, some are inactive, some are active. Like I said, there's several, oh, no, I said 80. We probably have 100 different accounts that we manage and make sure we're tracking the balances. So if a donor ever came back, we could show them exactly how it got spent, where the checks went, where the money went and those sorts of things. And this is a list. It is not a complete and final list because they're still kind of working through that process and finalizing all of the different scholarship opportunities. But this is the current list at the time. And we have some incredibly generous donors in this community. That one's pretty straightforward. Any questions?
Any questions on the scholarship fund? Okay. Rob?
I just remember one of the scholarships I got when I was a high school student was actually a loan that, you know, it was like a $500 or something. And then later I paid it back. Are there any like that where...
Not that I'm aware of. I would probably advise against them. Because that would be difficult, once, once the students graduate, for my office that and even for the high school office, it becomes more difficult. We have a few kind of renewable scholarships where if they meet certain criteria, they can have it renewed for their second, third, and fourth years. And sometimes that becomes a little difficult because it's, we're relying on the students to come back and make sure that we're in connection with where they are and how to get ahold of them and those sorts of things. But we don't have any like that that I'm aware of. It's, it's a pretty straightforward cash straight to the school process. So we do have one where it's allowed for textbooks that can, the money, the additional money can go straight to the student, but that's the only exception that I'm aware of.
Amy?
Are any of the scholarships completely endowed? Which means that they'll go on for perpetuity without additional money or...
I don't know if they're completely endowed. We do have several through the, it's not called the Community Foundation anymore, but that's what I've called it for a long time. I can never remember what they changed it to. That have a significant balance. And we get, they're not ones that we hold, the Community Foundation holds it. And then we basically get a check with the amount that's available each year. The Lucille Dusterhoff is one. We've had between 12 and 13 thousand dollars every single year. And so we typically do 12 or 13 $1,000 scholarships out of just that one. So, and I do get statements on most of those that kind of show where the balance is. And since I've been here, that one's been pretty much the same. So I anticipate we have several that will go on for quite a while. I don't know if I could say forever, though.
Excellent. Jeff?
Question on the, was this like 18 million you said you have extra to invest? Is that what you're talking about? Was that the number? Whatever it was.
I typically try to invest about 18 million.
Okay. One question I had, and I understand you're limited on that and you've got an advisor for that, but I'm wondering, do you have any kind of a committee? Or I mean, you know, two minds, three minds are better than one as far as the information you're getting back to make the decision of where that money goes or what you're investing in?
We haven't to this point. It's been pretty much just me deciding where it goes and looking at our cash flow and knowing what things I have upcoming and can I really do three months or 12 months?
Well, I mean, I would like to see a little bit more of a committee or just some other thoughts on that to see, you know, where that money's going. Because that's a, that's a big, and I'm not saying you're doing a good or a bad job because I just don't know. But I'd like to see some other feedback and get just more opinions on it and have a group of experts that can, can, you know, give you consensus of, you know, with your advisor and then, you know, where you're putting that money. So just a thought.
Yeah, that's something we could probably bring to the finance advisory committee.
And Jeff, just the key thing too there is that, you know, working with that, it's, there's a very narrow list of parameters and what we're able to do.
Right. And you're probably pretty limited.
The policy actually calls for an investment officer, which Val is the investment officer. And so it isn't like a number of other investments where you have this real plethora of opportunities. It's because the state wants to give school districts the opportunity to invest, but also knows the responsibility that that investment officer has, there's obviously very narrow and very, very predictable and safe kinds of investments. We're not talking about, as Val mentioned, we're not talking about the market. We're talking about very reliable and safe investments. Our policy pretty clearly lays that out. And of course, then there's additional components that we have through the financial advisors to ensure that. I don't think it's a problem for us to take a look into having a group that looks at it. But what we've been doing so far is looking, using the policy as our guide as to how Val does that. And it was a, it was a missed opportunity that we have had over the years. We've done some of it, but Val has just put it more to the forefront to put us in the strongest financial position. Because being good stewards also means about trying to get as much money out of the funding streams that we have. And this one is one that we just had not been as assertive in over the years. And it just simply means we're taking advantage of the things that are offered to us. But just to be really clear, that the policy's guiding how Val does it, specifically calls for an investment officer, doesn't mean we couldn't expand it. But I just think it's really important for us to say that this is a very, very, very narrow set of parameters that Val's working under.
Yeah. The statute basically lists certificates of deposit, money market accounts, and some very highly collateralized commercial paper type investments.
Shortlist.
Yes.
Excellent questions. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Val, I think...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you again for the, for the great presentation. Okay, we'll move on to our final report this evening. Here is Child Nutrition Director Stephanie Stromy with the 2017-18 proposed child nutrition budget.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here to discuss the child nutrition budget this year. Before we go into the budget, I want to do a little review of our program and some of the highlights of things that we've done for the school year. Over the past year, we came up with the new district vision, which I know you're all very familiar with. But for Amy, who is new to the school board, welcome first of all. And I just wanted to review with you what our Child Nutrition Services mission statement is. And just as a reminder to all of you on the board, our Child Nutrition Services mission statement is to provide quality nutritious meals that support the growth and development of students to fuel their learning. And I thought back to the vision statement and I thought, maybe we should be changing that to every student. And so maybe we'll take a look at, making a slight modification to that. So in review, this is one of our cold, fresh vegetable and fruit stations that is at Greenville Park Elementary and something each day the students are able to go through and get a variety of cold fruits and vegetables as they go through the line. We know that breakfast has been suggested to positively affect the learning and cognitive skills and school performance of our students. And this year, we did see an increase in participation for our reduced students and our normal students. I apologize because of the formatting of this slide. When I sent my presentation to Bruce, it was formatted differently, so it's a little off-kilter here. But we did see an increase for both, both reduced and normal-priced students quite significantly. There was a decrease in the participation for the free students. Part of that we do attribute to, there was an adjustment in the amount of students within the district who qualified for free meals. And so then, you know, you could ultimately assume that some of them have gone into the reduced category. So you would see that there would be that increase in participation in the reduced category. We did also see a slight decline in the amount of kindergarten students who participated this year in breakfast. And kindergarten breakfast is offered free to all students who choose to participate. But a lot of times, students will eat breakfast at home and then they choose not to have that meal when they come into school. The other change is, at one of the schools, Greenville Park Elementary, we had been offering kindergarten breakfast in the classroom. We made a change halfway through the school year and we're offering it in the cafeteria. So there might have been some slight decline in the number of students participating because it was offered in the cafeteria and not offered in the classroom at maybe a later time in the morning. This is just some of the items that we've served at breakfast. Again, we have a fruit bar that students can go through and select. Usually, we will have canned fruit and a fresh fruit option that's provided. Those are yogurt cups that they get. That's on our menu cycle. We do a two-week menu cycle for our breakfast rotation. And on Wednesdays, it's usually a special treat. They either get a smoothie that's made with yogurt, fruit, and applesauce. And then they also, on the opposite weeks, will get a yogurt cup that's made. And those strawberries or blueberries that are put in that are commodities that we receive through government funding. For lunch, we did also see an increase about the same that we did for breakfast. We saw an increase in the reduced participation by about 13%. The normal-priced students are up 3% in participation. We did, as well as breakfast, see a reduction in the participation for the free meals. This, these meals were served, the meals that we... These meals were served, the meals that we looked at and counted were based on 126 days versus 123 student days last year. We took into effect that there were the two snow days. And then, we also had huge state participation, which I know last year I mentioned, as well as being something that factored into our participation. This year, we saw an even higher with the state girls hockey and boys hockey and soccer and a lot of our teams going to those events. So, that plays into effect in our participation as well. Again, this is another fruit and salad bar that's available to our students. Some of the things that are new this year for the Northfield School Districts. At Greenville Park Elementary and Sibley Elementary, we're offering pre-made salads daily, and we've really seen a huge participation in students who previously weren't purchasing lunch. Now, the kitchen managers and the staff are seeing those students going through, as well as staff purchasing these meals. Each day, there's a set rotation of kind of what the featured salad would be. It can be a Caesar salad, an Asian salad, a chef salad, crispy chicken salad. So, they do a rotation. There's a taco salad down on the bottom. And they're beautifully displayed. I just think how, you know, the students see them, the staff see them. They're really inviting and encouraging students to take them. I know they've reported that some days, there will be 40 salads that they're making. So, I would say on average, it's probably 20 to 25 salads that they're making. Another new thing that we incorporated this year at Bridgewater was working with the fifth grade classes. And Vicky Malak, who's the kitchen manager, and I would go into the classrooms. We worked with Nancy on kind of picking who the teacher is, who the first teacher was, that we would start this kind of pilot program. And we went in and worked with them, talked with them on what it takes to create a meal, how we plan meals, everything that goes into it, the requirements, all of the different components that we have to do, planning the various vegetables and subgroups that we have to use each week. So, as an educational experience for the kids to learn about. But then, the fun thing was, we had them come up with a meal, and then we served that meal to their peers. So, then, everybody at Bridgewater was able to have this meal. This is the first meal that we did. It was an upside-down chicken pot pie, and the kids really enjoyed it. We took a survey, and most of the kids really liked it. We thought, well, this might be something that not, would not go over very well. But most of the kids even asked if we could menu it next year. So, I think it's something that we would put on the menu for all of the elementary schools. So, it's a great way to find out what new products are available to and get the input of the students. Some of the other meals, we did a build-your-own hamburger bar. We did a baked potato bar, and the kids really enjoyed that going through. They chose to have guacamole on the bar and fresh watermelon, different things. So, it was a very colorful plate. And we talked about when we were in the classroom, eating the colors of the rainbow. And that's a way to make sure you're getting all of the nutrients that your body needs, rather than just kind of eating a plate that's the same traditional white colors. And then, we also did, we're doing a breakfast-for-lunch meal, and we're doing a fruit salad, a rainbow fruit salad with that group. We also did World Language Week again. We've done that for the last several years. Some of the things that we incorporated with this menu that were new, the rodeo burger. We called it the rodeo burger, just based on Jesse James and kind of our local community, something that would be fun for the kids and encourage them to try it. We also did a chicken bean burrito, and we did a chips and salsa bar where they were able to try a mango salsa and plantains that day on the menu. A few things that I don't have slides for that we're going to be doing for next year is, at the high school and middle school, we're doing a change. And typically, we've had hot à la carte items available to the students each day, things like pizza or corn dogs. And with the movement of things needing to meet all of the smart snack requirements and things, we've decided to incorporate these as an alternate meal line. And so, we're going to have a two-week menu rotation. And rather than the students purchasing these things for à la carte, they're going to be included as a full meal. And we feel it's a way of offering a healthy meal too, because along with that choice, they'll be getting a fruit, a vegetable, and the milk. It's also more cost-effective to the parents and the families. We had a lot of feedback from parents, you know, that their students would go through the line and maybe just buy a piece of pizza or something, and it wasn't a very healthy thing, but it was expensive. And we would talk to them about, well, they can purchase a whole meal for a price of about 15 cents more. So, through conversations with that, we decided that we're going to try and incorporate this additional meal line for our students to try. In this way, it will be available to all students to participate in. The other thing, as a result of the thought exchange process that went out this year, there was, one of the concerns or thoughts expressed was, at the middle school, there not being enough choices for the students as they went through the line of things to purchase and eat. So, with the result of that, Amy Seave and I, she disappeared, she was here, we created a video for the middle school, and it's available on her website. But we're also going to use it as a training tool for fifth graders who are coming into sixth grade, so their parents can watch this video, the students can watch this video, maybe at a web meeting, and see what the different lines are, how they can go through in the cafeteria, and the choices that they can actually make. So, hopefully, they'll have a little clearer understanding of what the meals are and what's provided for them. In February, I attended with several Minnesota Directors of the Legislative Conference, and I attended along with the Minnesota School Nutrition Association Public Policy Committee. And when we were there, we were proposing a bill, talking to the legislatures about increasing our funding for five cents. This is an infographic, and I don't know if you had a chance to really review it, but it's nice, it's a nice summary of school lunch economics and really what we're looking at on a day-to-day basis for funding. A meal costs $303.36 approximately is what is reimbursed for the free or reduced. And for each regular-priced meal, we're reduced about, we're refunded, reimbursed, excuse me, 50 cents per lunch meal. At the bottom, you see there's the difference of about .05 cents is what we feel, you know, we needed to recapture in the funding for free and reduced meals. And we knew we wouldn't get the additional 12 cents from legislatures, but we were hoping for five cents. There hasn't been an increase in funding from the state since 2013, so we were asking for that five cents. And you can also see the direct food service expenses here. Typically, 35% of our food costs are from our budget, and then labor costs about 33% in our budget. And as I go over our budget, you'll see that those numbers really kind of fall within The USDA and the Nutrition Services finalized regulations on the local school wellness policy, and they have said that we need to be in full compliance by the end of June this school year, so that by the next school year, we'll be in full compliance of the wellness policy. I did include in your handouts a summary of the final rule, and it talks about the different areas of the wellness policy that are required to be in compliance. You know, we need to have specific goals set and parameters, nutrition guidelines and standards set, which many of those we are already following because of the federal guidelines that we need to be a part of because of the school lunch program. There also will be standards for all foods and beverages, not only provided to students and sold to students, but those that are just, you know, on campus basically and available to students. Policies for food and marketing will be included in that. And then, they really want to have involvement, a committee that's involved. We've organized a committee of students, community members, representatives from the school district who currently sit on the committee, and we've met a couple of times this year already. And then, we have the policy that you'll be doing a reading on this evening. So, unlike Val's budgets this evening, mine is not so straightforward. So, we ended up doing a revision on the child nutrition budget, mostly due to the participation that we had over the school year. We saw that there was an increase in participation. So, we actually are going, we're suggesting that we revise the budget from 1.1 million to the 1.2 million in our budget revenue. And then, our federal sources, we're finding that because of that increased participation, we also have more reimbursement coming in from state and federal sources. So, we're revising the budget so that it would include 112,000 versus the 102,000 from state sources, and 832,000 versus the 791 from federal sources. What we're proposing for the 2017-18 school year is, we can assume that participation is going to stay consistent. And really, we do that by forecasting out over a nine-month period what our current participation has been, and that's how we determined what the revised budget would be. We're anticipating participation will stay the same for next school year. We do know that there will be no changes in the state reimbursement. The bill that we brought forward about the increase of five cents didn't pass through the committee, so we know that there won't be any additional funding for state. And federal reimbursement rates, we still, that hasn't been determined yet, but we feel that there probably won't be any change this year on that as well. We're also proposing that there will be no increase in our paid lunch rate this year. Typically, we have, every two years, we've done a price change in our school lunches. But because we've remained fiscally responsible, and as you'll see in future slides, that we've really built our fund balance to a point where we need to be looking at spending down that fund balance, so we don't go over what our nine-month, three-month expenditure is, or not expenditure, three-month.
The max three-month. The state of Minnesota has a fund balance max for the Food Service Fund of three months of operating expenditures based on a nine-month operating year.
So, we're looking at, because of the increased revenue coming in this year, that we don't want to, we're going to pass that savings on basically to our families in our districts and not increase the cost of food lunch for them. And we were able to determine that by doing the paid lunch equity calculator, and so we determined that we were able to do that as well. The child nutrition expenditure summary, again, some revisions were made with that. We saw that there was an increase in benefits from the 264,000 to the 314,000 this year, and that was due to more people being eligible for that and also a change in people who were eligible choosing to take the benefits that we hadn't anticipated on. And we also saw a reduction in food and supplies. One big area for that was the amount of milk. We started doing the sharing carts, and so, we were able to really monitor our food waste. And we could put in whole produce, or we could put in milk and put that into the sharing cart, or it could be reused. And so, we did not go through as much product. There was less waste then with those products as well. And also, my staff did a phenomenal job of just really projecting numbers of, you know, how many people were going to be eating and not having a lot of food waste. And for equipment, we did also see less expense used in that category. We did receive a grant, a farm-to-school grant this year totaling about $11,000. We did purchase a new combi oven for the middle school, and we purchased a countertop freezer for the high school to increase the amount of à la carte choices that they could provide. But with that being said, then, we didn't spend as much in our expense category that we had budgeted for with equipment. So, we're proposing a revised budget for this school year of 2,071,000 versus the 2,099,000 that we had projected last year. And then, we're proposing for the 2017-18 school year, a budget expense of 2,232,000. And again, this assumption, we're basing it on the staffing model for salaries and benefits with a slight increase based on workload assessment. We did see, we are catering meals to Laura Baker, and we did also see an increase in the number of meals that we're serving to Longfellow. So, we had to increase the amount of labor through Greenville Park Elementary. And then, we're expecting a 3% food cost increase. So, the proposed budget for 2017-18, you'll see that our fund balance will be right around 694,000. And when we averaged out our three-month average, that should not exceed the nine-month operating year at 690,000 or 700,000, we saw that we needed to spend down next year with that. When we came, when we were looking at the budget, we did find that our food costs were in line. They were at about 44%, which included the food and milk expenditures, which was in line with the previous slide that I had shown you. And then, our labor was estimated at 32%, and our benefits were at 16% for that. So, we're proposing that our revenue be at 2,173,000, and then, our expenditures be And then, this is some of our additional guests that we've had serving meals for us this year. We had Scott Sanus, who was in, dressed up as Mr. Incredible, I believe, over the holiday season. And then, we have Dr. Hillman, who also, he served at each one of our schools this year, which was very appreciated with our staff. They really enjoyed that, and it was a nice way for them to show up what they're doing. And they're very proud of the things that they're doing for our children in our district. We would invite any one of you who would be interested to come in and serve or participate one day in a meal. I think that would be a fun experience for you to see actually what's being done out in our district. So, with that, are there any questions?
Once again, this year, an excellent presentation. Board members, questions or comments? Ellen?
First of all, I was really excited to hear about the different ways that you've been evolving. So, I know like the, with food services, they're voting with their feet. So, the fifth-grade learning piece, I think, what a great age to do that. And then, the video for parents, oh, I would have loved that in middle school, because once they go, you just have no idea. You just hear from the kids what it's like. So, I think that's fantastic. I had two questions. One was, Val has continued to kind of put into our focus the enrollment trends that have happened and our increases in enrollment. And I was curious as to, how do you do that in your forecasting? It seems like that would be a challenge.
Yeah. You know, it's really not something, because our forecasting, you know, I think we're up 100 students this year? Or is it maybe? Over the last, yeah. Yeah. You know, so, really, when it comes in October, one way of us forecasting is just looking at, not for budget purposes necessarily, but for our staff, that they know, they look based on participation. At the beginning of the school year, for them, it's really looking at, you know, a numbers thing, and they track and they keep records of how many children have participated with certain meals. And then, we kind of can forecast the next time that that meal is offered. And then we kind of can forecast the next time that that meal is offered, how much we need to anticipate bringing in for those products. And then we just look over time. And that's partially why we probably had to do the revised budget because of our participation and our numbers being up and bringing on Laura Baker. We weren't sure how many students would be participating in lunch each day with Laura Baker.
Yeah, if I can just clarify Laura Baker, because I think sometimes when we hear Laura Baker, we think of the Laura Baker Services. And that's the term, because that's the place where we deliver the food, but it's specifically for the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative Students with Unique Needs or SUN program. So they deliver the food to Millis Hall. And for some folks in the community who understand that Laura Baker has its own kitchen and does a lot of its own pieces, that was not something we were able to work out with Laura Baker. In fact, we actually thought Laura Baker was going to be able to cater the meals for that up until maybe August. And Stephanie, when we learned from the department that that was not going to be possible, one of the great things that I appreciate about Stephanie is not just her management of the food service, what we used to call the food service program or the child nutrition program, but the leadership that she demonstrates. And this was an example where she could have certainly said, what, you're telling me like three weeks ahead of time? And that was not the case. She said, yes, we'll get it done and we'll figure out how it's going to be done. And rather than being that management piece, it shifted to leadership, which is something I really appreciate about Stephanie. But for folks at home, we're not catering all the meals for Laura Baker Services. It's for about typically 18 students, few less.
Yeah, probably a total, yeah, I would say maybe 10 to 12.
10 to 12 at the SUN program each day. So just so people are clear about that, please.
Thank you, Matt.
And then just to, a follow-up to Ellen's question. Because at the time that we do the budget, we're also analyzing whether or not we should be increasing meal rates. We typically don't plan for an increase. We, we assume that the partition, participation will be flat. And if we have an increase, you know, that's great, but I'd rather know going into it if it really looks like we may need to increase rates or not. I don't want to assume that we're going to have, you know, kids that we may not and make a decision that I don't want parents to have to pay more money than, than is really necessary. So that's part of it as well. So, thanks.
Rob?
Two questions. First one, with the pre-made salads, is there, it seems like that creates more recycling is there, because the plastic containers, so is there a recycling program that goes with that?
We can recycle those items. They're not compostable, but they are able to, it's a recyclable product, a container that they can use. And it's just a clear plastic.
And then my other question was, you mentioned the sharing cart. Could you explain that?
Sure. So the sharing cart is something that is really specific with each county. It depends on your health inspector, what is allowed, because there's other counties that aren't able to do it or there might be other restrictions. So with our county, what we're able to do is if a student chooses to take a fruit, like a whole fruit, an apple or a banana or something like that, because they're required to take a half a cup of fruit or vegetable with their meal to make it reimbursable, a lot of times students will take that. But then once they have eaten their meal, they might decide that they don't want it. So they'll go back and we usually have a cart with bins in it and students can put their milk if they've chosen not to drink their milk in there, or they can take and put a whole piece of fruit. If something's had a bite out of it or whatever, then it goes into the compost. But if it's a whole, a whole piece of fruit, it can go into the sharing cart. But then it goes back into the kitchen and it's washed and, you know, taken care of and then can be put back out then for the students. And we see that typically, like the breakfast cart at the high school, I know if I'll walk back, walk through there in the mornings, back by the district office and they'll have a little bin and there's probably at least 10 cartons of milk that are in there and several pieces of apples. So before, we were finding those things sitting, you know, maybe on the water coolers or, you know, just sitting by a locker. So kids weren't eating them, they weren't throwing them away. But then, you know, three hours later, I'd see a milk carton that was sitting on the top of a water thing and certainly it isn't safe at that point. So this way, we know it can be brought, put back into a cooler and be safe for the students to eat.
Amy? First, you've made me very hungry tonight. It all looked, your pictures look great. I just have a couple general questions. The first is how much actual food preparation and cooking do you do compared to just heating? Because I've read articles about how places are doing a lot of reheating now, but it looked like you were actually doing a lot of cooking.
We try and incorporate both methods. You know, when you have the large number of students that we're serving, there certainly are items that we will take and like the quesadillas or something like that, that is basically a heat and serve item. But then we've also incorporated into our menus, things like pasta. So then they'll make the sauce and they make the noodles. We have an Alfredo, a chicken Alfredo that we've done, the upside-down chicken pot pie. That's something, again, that's a homemade item that they can have. So we try and incorporate a little bit of both. The fresh fruits and vegetables are something, you know, that are, if I can say, more natural or whatever, that they would be consuming fresh. We also, sorry, Amy, we also look at participation. You know, it's a hard thing. When we're a self-funded program, we have to look at participation because, you know, we might try things with students. Last year, we tried, it was a pizza volcano. And, you know, it seems really fun and neat, but the kids ate it and it wasn't their favorite. So we saw participation drop. We'll usually do it on a three-month rotation. We do a fall cycle, a winter cycle, and then a spring cycle with the menus. And if we see something isn't going well, we'll take it off. We tried a panini this year and it hasn't gone over that well, you know, as well as we had hoped. So then we kind of relook at it, reevaluate, and what can we do instead?
I also want to say I'm very excited about your taking the à la carte items and making them into meals because, you know, we, for, I have a daughter who's a junior and we put her money, money in her account and we'd say, you know, be reasonable. But like when she started out in middle school for the first time with the account, she was spending a lot, you know, because it was like, wow, she could buy everything. And then we had to sort of moderate her a bit. And there were times when she wanted the à la carte item, but she didn't want to spend too much and, and she wanted a meal too. She didn't want like two pieces of pizza with. So I just wanted to say thank you because it sounds like a great solution and it's something that I know my daughter and therefore I will really appreciate as you go forward with that approach. The, the one comment I've heard, and I haven't heard it recently, so maybe, you know, from, from my daughter is not always, if she has like a later lunch, the food isn't always as thoroughly cooked for the later lunches as it is for the earlier lunches. And I don't, I don't know if that's just a how many ovens you have question or how, how that works.
Sure. I mean, it's something I can certainly take back to my staff. We do batch cooking, so we don't prepare, you know, 500 slices of pizza to be ready for the first lunch that would go out at 10:30. They're consistently batch cooking and producing. And that's where the production records or looking at the history of, you know, lunch A, typically how many pieces of pizza would they go through so that they know how many to prepare? They do also need to temp everything when it comes out, so it needs to be of a certain temperature. But, you know, certainly it's something to bring forward and make the staff aware of if it's a concern.
Yeah, I haven't heard it recently. So either she's adjusted or everything's fine and, and it usually revolved around the pizza. So, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I had a, a couple of questions. I agree with, with Amy. I think it's really exciting that you're incorporating this other hot, you know, meal alternative. And it seems like part of that was driven by parent feedback, et cetera. So I'm wondering how you'll communicate that back out to the parents, because I think that's a huge win that you really listened to what they said and now are responding. And I think that parents will be as excited as Amy and I are to hear about that. Is there a way that that will get communicated to parents?
I'm sure, we'll, for one, we'll list it on the district website, kind of the changes of what's new for the school year. But then probably a notification will go out in Schoology, just making parents aware of that. Unfortunately, we had made the video prior to us coming up with this idea. So either we'll make like a little addendum on the video at the end of it or just make sure, I know there's going to be signage as the students come through. And I'm working with both the kitchen manager, C.C. Green at the high school, and Sherry Malika at the middle school, so that we make sure that, you know, students are aware that this is a new option that's available to them. But I think the best way is communicating with parents through Schoology so that they're aware of that new option.
Excellent, great, that's awesome. And I wanted to, thank you for the time you spent to go up to the legislators and, and kind of talk about this. I was really fascinated to see the numbers. I think, you know, I, I think you have an extremely challenging job and I think that there's people that might get a piece of it and maybe have comments about certain aspects, but they don't really have the whole picture. Like, you know, typically, something is always more complex than, than anybody can realize until you really delve into it. So this was, this was really interesting to see. I'm sorry that there weren't positive results to your efforts, but I think, hopefully you enjoyed the experience. And I always think that whenever you can weigh in particular people like yourself who have to make this work, it's really good for legislators to hear that. So I think it's, it's really, was great that you were able to do that. You alluded a little bit to really not seeing too much shift in the federal piece, but are you hearing of any legislation in, on the horizon that would maybe positively or negatively affect, besides maybe revenue, but just some other sort of aspects of the program that, that maybe are cause concern or are hopeful to see?
The one thing that I've heard is that things are being pushed back. I mean, it was supposed to be, you know, announced or the revisions of the bill were supposed to be looked at in the next couple of weeks. And it looks like there's other pressing things that have, you know, moved ahead of that. So, so it's being pushed back. So, you know, at this point, we really don't know. You know, obviously, like the wellness policy is something that we're all pushing and moving forward on, but we're not sure where the final result will be with that. But it looks like, you know, as of now, we need to be in compliance with it by the end of June.
Okay, great, thank you. And Dr. Hillman?
Just publicly, we want to make sure that we express our appreciation for Stephanie and her leadership because I think there's a perception of school lunch for a number of different years, but I will tell you, number one, if you come and visit our cafeterias or serve lunch like I have, you will be very impressed at the quality of the food that is provided to our students every day and how awesome our child nutrition staff is. They know kids, they greet them by name, they take our near-term priority of social and emotional health for all by prioritizing relationships seriously. And that's a direct result of Stephanie's leadership. She is a, as we like to say, above-board leader. She is every day usually at one of our cafeterias, making sure she's either helping out or observing or checking with kids and asking how they're liking lunch and all those kinds of things. You've seen some things that have been above and beyond, like helping kids learn what it takes to plan a meal, about the video and taking thought exchange feedback for her department seriously. Not a better poster child for using thought exchange than what she shared tonight. Leading staff and student wellness pieces, getting involved in instruction, and then she's just such a valuable member of our district leadership team. She attends the meetings with all of our principals and Molly and Val and buildings and grounds and really is an integral part of our team. So it, it just goes to show what strong leadership can do for a program and when you fully embrace the district's vision. And that's exactly what we've seen the Child Nutrition Department do under Stephanie's leadership and we couldn't be more thankful for her every day. Just an awesome addition to our staff. So it's my chance to thank her publicly each year. So thank you, Stephanie, for your work. We're very proud of what you're doing for kids.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Stephanie. We really appreciate it. So we will move on to our first item for individual action, which is the contract between Northfield Public Schools and Arcadia Charter School. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and as previously shared with you, we have been working through a number of things related to our charter school authorization process this year. As you know, we were renewed as a charter school authorizer with the Department of Education, one of only three public schools in the state that still authorize charter schools. That allowed us to continue the process with Arcadia. You heard Arcadia's very detailed report a while back, which included our site visit. That was the preparation that we did for the contract. You'll notice that the contract looks pretty similar because as an authorizer, we have a contract template that we have authorized by the Department of Ed. So when you think about Prairie Creek's renewal last year, this is virtually the same with, of course, Arcadia just modifying it for their particular purposes. So we have been working with the Department of Education over the last week. The contract that we have presented to you today is approved by the Department of Education. If you remember the first contracts that you approved, they were maybe 15, 20 pages. The new full application, the full contract is 139 pages, including all of the exhibits. This is what's required by the legislature. We included the first 24 pages for you and of course, shared with you that if you wanted to see any of the exhibits, you certainly could. We're asking to approve the, our part of the contract tonight. There is one more exhibit that we just need to have modified before both boards sign off on it, but talking with the department, it's inconsequential in terms of you approving it. So what we're asking for you to do is consider approval of another five-year contract as the authorizer for Arcadia Charter School.
Okay, thank you. Is this as an item for individual action? Is there a motion to approve the contract between Northfield Public Schools and Arcadia Charter School effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th of 2022? Moved by Noel?
Second.
Second by Rob. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Amy.
This for Dr. Hillman. Is there any downside for us to do this?
I'm looking at the time, no, I'm just joking. There, there, people would look at a cost-benefit analysis of why a school district would consider being a charter school authorizer. The board, over many years, has said that it's important that we maintain our status as a charter school authorizer. And I'm, I'm actually really proud that we are one of only three school districts remaining who authorize charter schools. If you think about it, choice is really part of Northfield's DNA and Prairie Creek has been around long before they were a charter school. Arcadia, you know, started as the, we learned, the Southeast Minnesota Arts and Technical School when it was back as R-Tech. We have had a very positive relationship with our charters. And if you think about a lot of communities' charters and the local public schools always seem to be doing this, a little bit of loggerheads. It has been, the reason I jest about the downside is it's been some effort to maintain being an authorizer. We are caught in the storm of many, what they call, single-purpose authorizers who in some cases, didn't have some of the best management practices. And so when somebody does that, the legislature tends to overreact and put a whole bunch of new requirements. We have met those requirements, which is great. And we do so willingly because we believe that both Prairie Creek and Arcadia are very valuable members of our educational community. And at some point, usually, a student who attends either Arcadia or Prairie Creek at some point is part of a Northfield Public Schools traditional program. And so we look at them as partners. So in terms of if you were to say, what's the downside, we have some additional work that we do. But the upside, I think, is, is, is much better in the cost-benefit analysis because we have partners and we get to go visit and learn from them and bring back some other things that they have tried, maybe for some of our practices. And they actually use quite a few of the things that we have done. It's a really a good partnership.
Other questions or comments?
I would just to take the time to thank Dr. Hillman for his work in bringing this contract to fruition. I think that your statement of some effort is a little bit of an understatement. But again, I think as a board, we have been proud to be able to support the partnerships with Prairie Creek and Arcadia, so.
And if I could just comment too, just that, you know, there's a lot of talk from time to time about the Department of Education and various pieces and a lot of people, you know, criticize their efforts. I just can't say enough about the technical assistance that we've received from the Minnesota Department of Education and specifically charter specialist Paula Higgins. As you, we don't do this every day, so she's actually taken time from me to go to the department, sit right by her and have her help me with certain parts that are more technical in nature that we don't do on an everyday basis. So this is one of the times I really want to compliment the Department of Education for their work in helping us bring these kinds of things to fruition from the charter school perspective.
Excellent. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the charter school contract with Arcadia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on. Okay, we will move on to resolution for termination and non-renewal of probationary licensed staff. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and on an annual basis, we bring before you this same resolution, and this is the list of probationary staff who are being terminated and non-renewed at the end of the school year. Just a clarification, because there's some longer lists here. The fact is that folks who have a long-term substitute contract or who are on a one-year contract, we've been given the advice, as well as many school districts, to formally terminate and non-renew those folks at the end of the year. It's a piece that they knew coming up front. It's just a, it's a step that we take to make sure that we have, in the minutes, that there's a separation of employment. So, many of the people on that list, you know, knew that when they took the job, just to clarify that piece. And then this year, we have a little bit of another piece there, which you'll see. There's a list of teachers who are employed by the, for, by us, for the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative. And as you know, we determined to be the fiscal host of that cooperative last year, knowing that sometime in the future, we would separate and that the cooperative would take on all of its own contracts. With the addition of Owatonna and Medford to the cooperative after the original partners of Faribault and Northfield, the cooperative is taking on all of its contracts next year. In fact, they've already approved a master agreement for their teaching staff. They're going to be doing so with an education, their educational assistance and administrative assistance very soon. And so, what we need to do is to non-renew all of those folks who we had hired for SEVSEC, because as of July 1, they will be employed by actually the SEVSEC district. And we think that that's a good thing. The cooperative really progressed much faster than anyone had anticipated in terms of the number of students and the kinds of things that the cooperative needs to administrate. So, that's just an explanation of why you're seeing all of the SEVSEC folks on there as well.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So, again, item for individual action, is there a motion to adopt the resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of the probationary licensed teachers, as presented, effective at the end of the 2016-17 school year? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Noel. This is a roll call vote. Strattman.
Aye.
For Al.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Hardy.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a couple of personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff, is there a second? Second by Ellen. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to items for information. In our packets, we have the revised School Board Policy 533 regarding wellness. Dr. Hillman, and I know Stephanie Stromy is still here to answer questions as well.
And this is the first reading of this policy, but as Stephanie mentioned, by the end of June, all school districts in Minnesota are required to adopt a wellness policy that comes into line with all of the current guidelines and regulations. This is an unusual way that we bring the policy forward to you, because as you know, many times when we're making changes to a policy, you'll get a strike-through, underlying copy. However, while there were quite a few similarities, there was so much difference in this particular one, using the MSBA model policy, that we just chose to bring the entire new policy to you for your review. The key piece here is that we've used the model policy and then made modifications as necessary for our local school district. But, the good news of using the MSBA model policy is that their legal team has reviewed it and assures us that it's in compliance with all of the regulations at the federal and the state level that are supposed to be in place at the end of June, though we had just heard that some other phases of those acts that created these guidelines are being delayed. We know that they will still expect us to have these adopted by the end of June. So, we anticipate there might be some questions, and we'll certainly take those. And then again, it's a first reading, so it isn't that we're asking for approval tonight, it's a piece that you can, of course, come with additional questions at the next meeting prior to its adoption.
Dr. Hillman, and maybe Stephanie, can you highlight maybe some of where some significant changes have been made, or, or maybe just sort of a, kind of an overview of, of some of the key changes that you see, and maybe where some of the challenges you'll have with it?
I think one of the biggest challenges that we'll face is really looking at the rewards aspect of using food as a reward or a treat to encourage students to participate in class, or, you know, for whatever reason. And I know I sent out this information to the entire district so that they could review it, just to see, and so that they're aware that this policy is going to be put into place by the end of June and of the changes. And I specifically noted to them the section, and it's Section D, "Other food and beverages made available to students." And that's the area where, you know, really looking at celebrations and parties, classroom snacks brought in to parents, rewards and incentives.
And that's on page four of your policy for folks who are looking for it.
Actually, 533-5 is what I have. I'm not sure if that matches up to...
I think it begins just on that previous page. "D, other foods and beverages made available to students," is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it starts on 533-4 and then goes over to 533-5.
So, that, I, you know, the celebrations and parties, we know it's been something that's been very common practice for parents and stuff to bring in treats for their students, and they really want to discourage the fact that these would be made available to students. And in the feedback from the committee that we have, we have representation from all of the schools, and they really thought that this was a good direction to be taking with our families, because it also, it puts kind of it into perspective that it's the law now, and we can say, you know, this is something that's being mandated by a policy through the federal guidelines, and then also, it helps that, you know, kind of, everybody can be created equally. There isn't the stress of needing to bring in something to celebrate a child's birthday or different types of celebrations, but really looking at other avenues of being able to celebrate, rather than using food as that reward. And I think there was a lot of positive feedback, and I spent the day at Bridgewater last week, and I did have a few teachers stop by who said that they were looking forward to this, because it was something that they could report back to families and just say, you know, this is something that we need to be following now in its policy.
I, I would agree, that I think those are going to be the biggest changes in terms of really breaking the tradition. You know, if you think about it, as long as a person can think many classrooms, you know, a birthday party with specific birthday treats brought in from home is something that's been a staple. And the fact is that just times have changed, and if you think about a number of the challenges of, of those kinds of things in the classroom, the least of which is the, well, it's not the least, a significant piece, which is the equity piece, if you think about it, in terms of the ability of all families to be able to provide something similar. But we also know the host of allergies and other kinds of things that we have seen arise in our classrooms, and so, this is a piece that I think many folks would have preferred to have done this several years ago, but we are being mandated to do it now through the policy. And I think that other piece about the, using food as a reward is another piece that is, I think that Stephanie's done a good job of letting our staff know about this well in advance, and we'll continue to communicate it. There's also been some reasonable changes in terms of, the original model policy indicated that there was none of that at all. Well, we, Stephanie did check, we have to exercise a little bit of common sense here, and Stephanie checked with a few other districts who had already implemented a policy, and so what you'll see is that buildings can make two specific building-wide modifications per year. I'm going to give you the example that the middle school, for a long time, has done a hugs-not-drugs event, where they hand out, for, you know, anti-drug awareness week, they hand out a small Hershey's Hug candy to kids as part of... Now, if you plug that into the snack calculator, it wouldn't qualify, but, you know, what common sense has to say is that this is something that the middle school has done for a while. It's not like they're putting on a buffet of candy for kids, they're giving one small chocolate treat. Well, that's the way that we have modified the policy to allow two exceptions on a building-wide basis to a, to a year. Not that buildings have to do that, but that just shows, using good judgment and common sense, for something that is as, as minimal as that particular piece. I think the other thing that you'll see is that we will be required now to do a triennial assessment, so every three years, we will have to review our compliance with our own policy. And so, that's a piece that just making sure that districts are intentional about not letting something like this get away from you, and let other habits come back into the traditional mode. So, I think that's another piece that is a little bit different, that we're going to be required to make sure that we review our own compliance on a regular basis.
And just, so you're aware, this policy is in effect during the school day, and what encompasses is the school day. As odd as it may sound, it's midnight the night before to 30 minutes after the last bell rings. So, for instance, at the high school, a student wouldn't be able to come into school Monday at 12:00 a.m. and, you know, have a snack that wouldn't meet the guidelines. Not that anybody's going to, but that's where they set the parameters, was midnight the night before. And then to 30 minutes after the bell rings. So, at 3:30, then, you know, this policy then doesn't necessarily take place. So, there are some instances where the after-school snack programs, where Erin and I have talked about this, that there's products that they have available to them that have been donated through, through the food shelf and things that they're able to utilize, and so, you know, making sure that we're still able to incorporate those things. But really talking with those groups and maybe saying, are there some healthier alternatives that are available for our kids through the food shelf that, you know, maybe we can have meetings with them just to see? There may not be, but just making it, approaching them just to see if there are opportunities for our kids. And then, you know, looking at other things, other events that are maybe held in the evenings, that we can encourage some opportunity for, you know, healthy snacks, even if there are things that aren't meeting the guidelines that are beyond the school day, but just also to encourage that to our children.
Okay, questions? Amy?
Well, I see end of an era, the cupcake era, and I, I don't see it as a bad thing, but I think there's going to be a lot of retraining of parents, so I wish you all the best with that. And I really, as a parent, I think, boy, it'd be much better to go out and buy a bunch of bananas and cut them in half or something, and if that fits the guidelines, than to have to worry about baking cupcakes or whatever. So, I think you can convince parents that it'll work. So, I, I think that's all a good change for the parties. My question is, I know my daughter will bring cookies in for her friends sometimes, you know, and share them and inquire, or whatever it is. Is that sort of thing, where it's not a formal handing them out at school to a whole class, but it's just, you know, with 20 close friends or whatever it is? Will that be affected as well, or how does that work?
According to the policy, you know, we're saying that we're encouraging healthy items to be brought in, and it does mention somewhere in here, I'm not sure exactly where, that parents will be encouraged for students to be bringing in healthy options, and then we'll have suggestions will be provided for them to have that. Certainly, I mean, we can't be policing everybody...
Yeah, I think we're not going to do any check of the lunch boxes going. And I think that on some of that basis, where students bring in their own pieces, that's not something that we are generally going to... What she's talking about is clearly that we're encouraging it, but if a student brings in a handful, you know, dozen cookies to share with their friends, that, that goes beyond what we are able to control. We are not going to dictate to people who are bringing their lunches in or bringing things in from home. Now, if we have someone who's running a little cookie ring or something, we might, you know, address it. You know, however, I think the key thing is that we are able to govern and police what we offer. We can encourage and what we allow. We can encourage and we can, but for the high school student who brings in some cookies to share with their friends, we're not going to have our, we cannot have our lunch supervisors going around and saying, no, we're not going to allow you to share that with your folks. That, that's where it goes over the level of being reasonable for us to be able to implement. We're going to be able to monitor and control what we have the ability to sell or those kinds of things, and the pieces around the formal giving access through the classroom, we obviously are going to be able to control that, but there's some of those kinds of things that go beyond what we're going to be able to enforce, nor would I want to have our people enforcing that. That just seems to step over the line for me. But I think that that's the kind, it's a great question, because that's what someone's going to share, but the kid who brings a handful of cookies to share with their friends acquires, as long as it's not a formal piece that it's endorsed by the classroom, if it's friend-to-friend, I think that that's something different. That's one of those things we're going to encounter and deal with as we come along.
So, does that mean bake sales are also gone now, or have they been gone for a while?
Which explains a little bit of a different blogging.
Bake sales would be fundraisers. If they, if they do occur 30 minutes after the school day, you know, then that would be something that would be allowed, because it's outside of kind of the policy time. But it has been strongly discouraged during the school day for there to be any sale of items that do not meet the smart snack guidelines. And I know there is a calculator that we use on anything that's sold à la carte, and it's something that probably will be included on the website where there's access to the policy, that parents can go in and type in the nutrient information if they want to, to see if their product is compliant, and if it's something that they wanted to bring in. But, yeah.
Not during lunch hour.
Yeah.
Ellen?
So, I understand all of the policy around the wellness in terms of the food, but what I was just curious about is, it's just interesting, it's more of a commentary that there's a lot more to wellness than nutrition, and there's a little bit on physical activity, but not really, you know, not, not coming down with sort of mandates, and nothing on mental well-being, or sleep, or some of the other things that we have talked and really struggled with as a board. So, I think it's really interesting that that is the thing that's being mandated, which I think is important, and I applaud all of the work that it must be, even should be exhausted, Stephanie, trying to, to figure out how to implement that piece. So, you know, on the one hand, I'm not wishing that we had, you know, all of those pieces to try to implement at once, but I just think it is kind of interesting that that's, is sort of singular.
You know, and remember, a lot of this came from the Healthy and Hunger-Free Kids Act, which really focused on the nutrition portion, and then the physical activity was a secondary piece that was part of that, but we did not see any of those other pieces come out of the federal government at that time. And I just think our assessment of the federal government right now is, I don't think in the short term, we're going to see any further expansion of that policy, or those, we're actually concerned about them potentially rolling some of it back, or as you heard Stephanie say, delaying it. I think some of those things are the natural component. The key thing is it's not a requirement yet in terms of the policy. So, in this case, in these early days, we've really tried to align with the School Boards Association model policy the best that we can, as we see how it unfolds. That does not mean that we could not add things ourselves to the policy as time goes on. You know, however, as you know, we try to be conservative with policy until we have better data and those kinds of things to guide our actions. But, I, I agree, I appreciate the fact that we called that out, that there's some other pieces around wellness that are not necessarily indicated in this model policy, that are important. We heard about that quite a bit tonight.
Amy?
Now, are you the official wellness coordinator, or how does that work? So, all right, so that goes...
I am.
I don't know the scope of your job. And then, the other question I have, I think it's good to watch sugar, but, and I haven't seen the guidelines, but do the guidelines cover trans fats and salts and, you know, so people are trying to bring pretzels in or something, that might not work, or...
They do. The calculator, which is something that I can certainly share, so you guys could see how we have to enter in all of the data for it, but what it looks at is the calories, the amount of fat, the trans fat, the saturated fat, the sodium, and the amount of sugar that's in an item. It used to be if something contained 10% of, like, vitamin D, or calcium, or iron, it would pass, because it had that nutrient in there. But since last summer, that's something that's been taken away, and so now it just needs, it needs to meet all of the guidelines as far as the amount of sugar, sodium, fat, all of those, the calories, and those items. So, there's certain guidelines with an entree, and certain guidelines with a snack, that we would have to follow.
Okay, great questions. Any other questions or comments? Noel?
Excellent report. What you just said sounds like a food label on a meal.
Like a what?
Sounds like a food. Excellent report. What you said just sounded like a food label applied to a meal. What you said just sounds like a food label applied to a meal.
Yep, yeah.
Like, I pick up the, the box of cereal and I get all that stuff. It sounds like you need to do the same thing for each day for a food meal.
Yep, so we take a look at that. For the meals, when we're creating a menu for our students, we could take a look at an average over the week of the meal, but when we're looking at specific items, um, that would be served in à la carte, we're looking at the food label of something and entering it in and making sure that it meets all of the criteria.
Back in the dark ages, when I went to school, a, a meal was twenty cents.
Well, um, any other questions or comments? So as board members review this policy, it will be as we have typically done. We have the first reading, so we will look to approve this at the, um, May 8th board meeting. But in the meantime, if there's questions, um, regarding the policy, um, I know Stephanie would be available to answer those. And, and I'm glad that Ellen highlighted, um, how challenging and extremely complex your job is. And I think that, um, you do it so well that you make it look easy, but we know that it's not. So thank you. And I, uh, we, I think we all echo Dr. Hillman's sentiments about your leadership and your work and everything you've done. I mean, the program has evolved to be such an incredible one, um, and we're really fortunate to have you, so thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you.
So that was the only item for, um, information this evening. Um, to review, future meetings, next regular school board meeting, Monday, May 8th. And, um, just as an FYI, there are two board members who are unable to be at this meeting. So if there are any other board members whose personal schedules change, um, for this date, please, uh, let, um, either myself or Denise know as soon as possible. Um, did you, and, um, Dr. Hillman?
Well, and, and I won't be here at the next board meeting. Erin Bailey is going to sit in my spot, uh, because both Julie and I's daughters have a confirmation event, uh, that evening that we'll be at to celebrate with our children. So just so people know that I won't be here, nor will Julie be at the next meeting, but Ellen is the vice chair and, and Erin will do a fine job handling the second reading of the wellness policy and some of those things, so.
Yes, okay, good. Thank you. So again, if anyone else's, uh, schedules change for that, um, let us know as soon as possible so we can ensure quorum. The following meeting then in May is Monday, May 22nd at 7:00 p.m., also in the High School Media Center. And just as a reminder, immediately following adjournment, the board will go into closed session for a negotiation strategy meeting. So with that, I ask that we adjourn. Moved by Noel, is there a second? Second by Amy.